All right. All right, welcome everybody to the Plymouth School Committee meeting. And before we get started, if everyone could just join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the
States of America. To the public who wishes to stand.
One nation.
God, indivisible.
Justice.
Justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody. So before we get started, I just wanted to let everybody know that we are doing our meeting today via Zoom. And there's a couple of reasons for that. The first reason is it should be a fairly short general meeting. So we wanted to, I'm getting a message, Brian, that we have no video, only audio. I don't know if that's coming from the public.
Yeah, I got the same message from someone as well, just got a text message.
Yeah, me too. Okay, so we are having this meeting via Zoom. We're expecting a fairly short general meeting. So rather than having everybody come out for that small amount of time. But we also have an executive session today that does have a few items on it. And we've been finding it's a little bit difficult to do the executive meetings while we're in Ed Lincoln Street. People that are on Zoom can't hear us. So this is, we decided would be the best solution, considering our executive session seems to have a bigger agenda than our general meeting. All right, so with that being said, the first thing on our agenda is comments from the public. And I believe we do have Mr. Bell is here to speak with us. And Peggy, am I correct that he's the only one today? All right, Mr. Bell, if you just want to introduce yourself and then you can give us your comments. We welcome you and thank you for coming.
Thanks. Just want to make sure you can hear me, I'm coming through. Oh, good. All right, Dan Bell, I've got a daughter that's a senior at Plymouth South. And I also have a son that graduated in 2015. I don't really, you know, I just wanted to voice a couple of things that have been on my mind and eaten at me. And I don't really want a reply. I mean, if you guys want to reply, that's great. But I just kind of want to throw this out there so the members of the school committee can hear what I'm feeling. And then hopefully they can absorb that and say, this is what's out there in the public. And it's not only, you know, school committee, like also there's some frustration that I'm experiencing with the state level, you know, with this recent mandate that they just came out with that goes into effect January 19th. So, but first I do want to say that, you know, the primary focus of keeping everybody safe, in my mind, has worked great. Because my daughter has never, and my son going back, he graduated in 2015. So we're talking 20 years. I have never experienced a fall where no one is sick, you know, not even a cold. So this is working. So I just want to throw that out there and say that, but I have three points of concern, okay? The first thing is about student quarantine. And Dr. Campbell, last meeting you brought up that, the way I heard it was, on average, there are 63 kids in quarantine in the district every day. I don't know if that's, I misheard that or that, that was my understanding. And and you didn't point out, I was trying to figure out like for every one kid that is is tested positive, how many kids going in quarantine because of close contact? From some data you gave, it looked like there, it was eight. Okay, so, so my concern, my, my thing that I want to throw out there is, I have no idea if my daughter gets quarantined for two weeks, what academic impact that's going to have on her, just trying to keep up. And I really don't care about, you know, she's a senior, she's a smart kid. She's gotten her, she's gotten everything she really needs to move on. It's all credentialing at this point. And unfortunately, she's not doing real well with homeschool style. You know, it's this, the homework overload. And the fact that she usually did her homework at the library, she would stay after school. And that's not available anymore. So I'm seeing, I'm seeing some negative results there across the board. So my, what I wanted to bring up about the quarantine is, what exactly happens? I have no idea. And I'm not looking for answers, but I'm hoping I don't have to cross this bridge. What, what does the, what is offered to these kids that are quarantined? I know they can't just zoom in from home, you know? So, so that's one thing. I don't want to take up too much time. I'm hoping that, you know, I watched the remainder of the meeting after, after this. So if you guys want to talk about it. So that was one thing. The next thing is this whole thing that's being mandated down from the state about, the district now has to make an adjustment for this. I think it's, you're going to wind up having to increase the amount of synchronous time. Is the way I heard it the last meeting whereby they're mandating 35 hours of synchronous time over a 10-day period. And to me, I'm like, what the hell? I mean, we already submitted an approval here. We submitted our plan, it got approved. And now they're coming in after the fact and saying, saying, you got to change it. You know, that's hard for me to swallow. And, and the reason I bring this up, it kind of, it's a trickle-down effect. Because the district did something that I don't agree with. In that they took away final exams because they needed the time for presenting, I guess. So they felt that final exams would take up two days and they, they want to keep teaching instead of testing. And my feeling is, is that took away a tool from the kids who use final exam to up their grade. If, because it was a percentage of their overall grade, a little bit, somewhat of a significant impact, even if it was just 10%. It's like you could boost your grade from a potential failing grade to a passing grade if you did well on the final. They don't have that tool anymore. And that was, I correlate this to the whole mindset of like, big brother said, we got to do it, you just eat it. And, and this is, you know, my point with, with that. I just hate to, to have to submit to this. And I, I'm just wondering, you know, from a district standpoint, we got to put money into actually researching and figuring out how we're going to accommodate 35 hours. And what is the state giving us any resources to help out there? Or they're just saying, go ahead, do it, you figure it out. So that's my frustration there. And then lastly, my overall frustration with this, okay, the COVID thing. And I know everybody here and everybody is doing as much as they can, okay? But going forward, the kids are the ones that are getting ripped off. And you're talking about, we're going 50% full-time, all right? The district has valued the cost of an education for somebody that wanted to come in at a district and actually attend Plymouth. It would be $16,000 a year. So if you look at it like, okay, how can we repay these kids that didn't actually get the full gamut of an education that kids in other grades have experienced? That's a lot of money across the district. So I was just wondering, you know, post-pandemic, is there any talk of like, what is going to be done to make up to these kids? The fact that they were only given, you know, X amount of hours associated with, with the use, just the use of the facility itself. These are gorgeous facilities we have, Plymouth South and Plymouth North. You know, taxpayers spend a lot of money to, to fund these. And these kids, if they stay in this area, are going to be paying for it the rest of their life. Yet you got, you know, a lot of kids that just aren't going to be able to take advantage of it during the pandemic. So as I said, I'm just here voicing my frustration. I don't really want to, you know, I'm not pinning anybody down and saying, what's the answer here, you know? But this is what I'm thinking. I got to imagine other parents are thinking the same thing. So anyways, I don't want to take up more, more time. I know you guys got an executive session going too. But just wanted to throw it out there so you guys knew what I'm thinking as a parent. Okay? That's all I got to say.
Thank you on points, and we really appreciate your input. And I think if Dr. Campbell has anything to say now, but I think he might address some of this when he, when he goes over his update. But I don't know if anybody has anything they want to add or. Yes, Dr. Campbell.
Yeah, just specifically, Mr. Bell, I appreciate your comments and your feedback and your support regarding the, I just wanted to address the quarantine piece because you were asking about that. You know, I could add it to my update, but then you won't have to stay on and watch the whole meeting if you don't want to. Regarding the quarantine, we've had a range of as low as 20 students quarantined in any given week and as high as 150, 151, actually. And that's not, the overwhelming majority of those are from external exposure. We've seen a lot of, when cases started to rise and increase, we saw a lot of household exposure. So it would start with either a mother or father or one of the children. And eventually you would see, then it would go through the household. So we saw more cases. And consequently, we had to quarantine, we had to quarantine students. And we quarantine when we're, you know, within six, when students are within six feet of an individual or staff member. Within six feet, over 15 minutes in a 24-hour period of a confirmed case. So in some of these, we've done it in abundance of caution. But in terms of the educational piece, we really would be encouraging our schools, our teachers to work with our students to make sure that they continue to get support from home in any way. And it would vary depending on the grade level, how we would do that. But we would approach that individually. And we also have to be very mindful about flexibility of time because our students are out for a longer period of time. So being flexible with the expectations in terms of the academic work that we're asking them to do during that time. So we will be working and we work with, through our guidance counselors and our, and our teachers and administration on an individual basis, depending on how long the quarantine is.
Okay, thanks a lot, Dr. Campbell. As I said, I haven't had to deal with it. I'm hoping I don't have to. But it does seem to be like kids are going to be playing catch-up, you know? And it's, it's not they, and, and the other reason I brought that up is because, you know, there's a big push. If you feel sick, stay home. If you feel sick, stay home. You know, there's a consequence to that. And I don't know if kids are actually mindful of the fact that, I don't feel that good, but if I stay home, I miss. I'd rather not get behind. I don't know. I can, I can tell you though, my daughter, she wouldn't be like that. She'd be like, I feel sick, I'm staying home. And she'd just deal with it in the back end. But I don't know, I imagine some more progressive kids maybe not staying home. You know, they just see through it's like, you know, I'm just going to have to make this up anyways, you know? And it doesn't seem that we have a solution for that, so.
It's, it's one of these situations where we have to be very understanding of the situation that we're imposing on individuals and try to be as flexible as we can under the circumstances. There's, there's no perfect solution, but do everything we can to support our students.
Okay, all right, well, thanks a lot for the information.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
All right, thank you. And I think that, Dr. Campbell, you'll talk a little bit more on your update as well with the new regulations and everything. All right, great. Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. All right, so moving on, we're going to go to our student representatives. We have Karen and Alexandra from Plymouth North and Plymouth South. You guys going to do it together again? Awesome, I love the collaboration. I think that's one of the themes of this COVID times.
Okay, I hope you guys ready. Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I hope you can. Okay, perfect, because obviously I'm not in my regular setup. So while Alex prepares our presentation, I hope everyone had a great break and had to relax and take a step back. And really reflect on everything. So yeah, we're really excited to be back. I feel like it's been a while. And I think to agree with some of what Mr. Bell said, that there's a lot of frustration, a lot of confusion. And we just have to roll with it and figure out together. So yeah.
So for Plymouth South, some updates. Prior to vacation, the executive board had a successful pajama day. Next Monday is a half-day for Remote Monday, as staff have a professional development day. The second quarter closed on Friday, January 29th, which is later than past years, but it'll be upon us before we know it. So we encourage students and parents to check Aspen and reach out to teachers with any questions.
So some key dates and upcomings. So in January, next, next week, I believe, Monday, January 11th is another Remote Monday, and it's a half-day as well. January 18th is a no-school day because it's a holiday. January 29th is going to be the end of semester one in term two, and grades will close as well. In February, we have, on February 5th, report cards will be published on Aspen and will go home with silver cohort students in last period. And on February 9th, report cards go home with the blue cohort students in last period as well.
So for Plymouth South, winter sports, they're underway and going well. We have a new co-op swim team between North and South, and there's 28 swimmers on that. They have virtual meets at the Pine Hills Pool and their schedule is now posted. The combined North and South Gymnastics Team also has our first meet on Sunday virtually. And we are collaborating with ATV and our local broadcasting students to ensure that as many athletic events as possible are broadcasted live as the number of spectators are unfortunately limited due to COVID. And fans are not allowed at away games.
Many of the same rules are, are applied at North as well. I did a little recap for the past week during vacation. Boys' basketball, congrats on their win against Quincy High, as well as girls' basketball beat Quincy 24 to 10. They have a game on Sunday, the 10th, against Hingham. Boys' hockey beat Pembroke 5 to 4. Girls' hockey actually lost against Hingham. And our swim team has a new schedule as well, I posted here. And all our sports will be broadcasted with ATV. Thank you, they're great.
For Plymouth South High School juniors, congratulations to those who received their white coats this past week. And there was two different celebrations hold, held honoring their accomplishments in the biomedical program. The juniors who received these white coats are currently enrolled in medical interventions. Their third course of their four-year program project, Lead the Way Pathway. The junior class also held a holiday spirit week prior to winter break, which was very successful. And a big event that happened was the annual toy collection. Students and all members of the community were incredibly generous. And the juniors brought a large amount of toys to the Plymouth Coalition for the homeless. Thank you to all that donated.
So again, Plymouth North, we had our white lab coat ceremony as well. I'm really proud of all of them because as a student, the biomedical program, it's really hard. All same with the tech program, we're all hands-on. So being in a pandemic and then having to switch to hybrid is really difficult. But they're making their way through it. At Student Council, they're pushing through ahead and persevering. Their freshman council is having a few fundraisers this month, so check them out. And they're using social media to their advantage.
So for Plymouth South High School seniors, reminders to sign up for your cap and gown orders. And local scholarship application is out. All seniors are encouraged to do this. The deadline for both of those is February 1st.
And to the Plymouth North seniors, they were also reminded to bring in their diploma forms. It's unfortunate, a third of the class have not passed them in yet. So they were reminded today to send them in physically or electronically. And we also are reminded to purchase our cap and gowns, which won't be available, I don't believe, after January 15th. So order as quick as possible and your books too.
National Honor Society for Plymouth South, the students who qualify for National Honor Society will receive their application shortly. Two different induction ceremonies based off cohort, cohorts will be planned. The National Honor Society also sold a lot of holiday wreaths prior to winter break. And I was there during pickup and there was definitely large piles. Some wreaths were donated with blue bows to the police department. And there were many elves that helped the recreation department with one of their holiday activities. Great job to all those who were involved and thank you for everyone who purchased a wreath.
Oh, yeah, that's me. So students of Plymouth South's humans behavior class put their hearts and braved logo advertising the inclusive nature of Plymouth South. The students want to assure peers and families that people of all abilities are welcome here. Posters have also been placed around the school in high-traffic areas with this message as well. Thank you to the collaboration of teachers, Mrs. Wolf and Mrs. Savers. We are so excited to have these logos around the hallways, so thank you.
And then HVAC update for Plymouth South. So students in our HVAC program recently partnered with the Plymouth Education Foundation and received one of their grants. This grant helped our students to provide heat to a family in need in our local community. Thank you to the staff and students in this program, as well as the foundation for partnering with them to complete this important work.
And for the tech programs at NOR, the application window is now open and the deadline is February 4th. Parents can visit the CCTE website or watch the videos at the website link below.
And then we have a quote from Vincent Van Gogh. So latterly, we've had quite a few paintings and drawings and sold a lot of them, but we still have a long way to go. And ads become more solid and lasting and substantial. Stay safe and stay smart.
Thank you.
Sorry, my mouse isn't working. Thank you, as always, that was a wonderful presentation. It's great to hear from you guys. Just to, like, you know, I know Brian and I sent you a message, but I am getting messages that there's video now, but a scrambled audio. So I just wanted to okay. So next on the agenda is our district COVID update. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Campbell.
Next time Alex and Karen are here, I'm going to request to go before them. It's hard to follow them.
I know, I know.
So yeah, thank you, Miss Avery. So first, a COVID update in terms of student cases. So we updated our dashboard today to record the cases from December 24th through January 1st. As, as you know, when school ended on the 23rd, prior to vacation, we had our data dashboard updated. So we did an update today, this afternoon. So the number of students with positive cases due to exposure outside of school during the vacation is 22. And 96 students continue to be quarantined. In terms of staff, we have 13 staff that, that have positive COVID diagnosis and 14, excuse me, currently under quarantine. So to date, the total COVID positive cases to date over the past 15 weeks now, so we're in week 15 of reporting, it's 112 students and 44 staff over those 15 weeks. So that is 1 and 1/2% of our student population and 3%, just over 3% of our staff. And all this information, as I said, can be found on our website under the COVID-19 case updates. So we have an icon for those who aren't familiar. And that's up there. It's been updated regarding our cases during the vacation. Excuse me, I was on a Zoom call today with Public Health Director this morning, as I am Monday, every Monday morning. And she's confirmed that the cases coming into Plymouth continue to be household transmissions and family members passing along to family members, gatherings that are taking place outside of school, et cetera. So despite the rising numbers, I know I've said this before, but I continue to be very pleased with the way that we're addressing health and safety measures in our schools. And it's largely due, I think that Alex and Karen could attest to this. It's the commitment of our students, our teachers, our staff, and of course, our families in following the recommended guidelines. But it's important that we do it not just in school, but outside of school. Physical distancing, mask-wearing, hand hygiene, and staying home, as Mr. Bell said, when you're sick. These are things that are really important. You know, there, there has been some skepticism expressed by a few in the community. But I can assure you that our number one priority, my number one priority, is the safety of our staff and students. This is my community. I have loved ones that work in this district, I have two children that attend our schools, five nieces and nephews. If I had any evidence, if we had any evidence or information shared with us that would suggest the need to change our practice, I would be the first to recommend that. Just before break, as this committee knows, we had a student test positive in one of our high-need programs. And due to the nature of the students supported in this program and the level of contact our staff have in these programs, we shut the program down for a few days to quarantine and ended up quarantining over a dozen staff. And so we're not going to take risks when information is shared with us. I just think it's important to share that information. I did send a reminder out to our school community this afternoon. I just wanted to repeat some of that, if people didn't read it. So as we return from this holiday break, it's really my hope that we continue to demonstrate that success that I've mentioned that we've had from September through December. We've received several emails from families who don't want to see the schools close, as well as a few expressing concerns about what's going to take place after the break. But if we work together as a community, with the collective efforts, we can keep our schools open. But it really requires, I can't say it enough, it requires our collective efforts to do what we need to do. So during the holiday break, we know that many families may have taken trips, visited families and friends at contact outside of their normal daily contacts. And if this is the case, we please ask you to take time to understand the travel orders that the governor has instituted in Massachusetts. You know, the CDC continues to state that travel increases the risk of getting and spreading COVID-19. So all visitors entering Massachusetts, leaving Massachusetts, you know, including returning residents who do not need an exemption or are required to, when you're traveling outside of Massachusetts, to quarantine for 10 days or produce a negative COVID test result that's been administered up to 17, 72 hours prior to your arrival back in Massachusetts. And if your COVID-19 test has not been received prior to the arrival, you must quarantine until that negative test result is received. So again, our number one priority is to educate our children. But we can't do this unless we keep our schools safe. And I'm confident that if we accomplish, we can accomplish this, if we practice healthy habits when outside of school, if we follow the advice of CDC, the travel orders this state, and we stay home when we feel sick and communicate and really be open and honest and transparent with any information that we have. So I also wanted to provide an update regarding the quarantine guidelines. These came out just after we met at a last meeting, I believe, was the 20, whatever the meeting was before the break. So on December 21st, the Department of Education announced its updated protocols for responding to COVID-19 scenarios in schools with recently updated guidance from the CDC. So this new guidance provides three new possible quarantine scenarios for districts. The first, close contacts of individuals who have tested positive for COVID-19 must quarantine for at least seven days, provided that they're tested on day five or later from their last exposure to the positive individual and receive a negative test result. So that is new. That's new to us as a district from the Department of Education. They must also not experience any symptoms up to that point. If they have a negative test and continue to experience no symptoms, they may return after day seven. In addition, the individuals must conduct active monitoring for symptoms through day 14. for symptoms through day fourteen and self-isolate if new symptoms do develop. An individual may also, another scenario, may also need to quarantine for at least ten days, provided they have not experienced any symptoms up to this point, conduct active monitoring for symptoms through day fourteen and self-isolate if new symptoms develop. No test is necessary under that option for the purpose of existing quarantine. The last scenario requires an individual to quarantine for at least fourteen days, which has been the practice, after the last exposure to the person who tests positive, if they have experienced any symptoms. So during the quarantine, even if they have a negative COVID nineteen test or they they're unable to conduct active monitoring of their symptoms, for some reason, they must quarantine for fourteen days. Lastly, in terms of the COVID update, I just wanted to let you know that today I learned that our school nurses are being considered for phase one of the vaccine rollout with first responders. This is very encouraging. I spoke to our director of public health today, as I mentioned earlier, and the town is expecting delivery of these vaccines sometime this week and distribution next week, so I'm happy to say that our nurses will have an opportunity to be a part of that first phase one of the rollout of the vaccine as well. So that's all I have, Ms. Avery, regarding the COVID update. I'm happy to answer any questions before I go on to the general update.
Okay, I have a couple of things, but Mr. Morgan, do you have a question for Mr. Dr. Campbell?
Yes, hi, Dr. Campbell, you mentioned that the nurses are being considered for phase one. Do we know when phase two will start, when our educators can be vaccinated?
The only information Mr. Morgan I have on that is it will begin sometime in February, most likely. I've not received any additional information on that. We are going to try to work hard to find. Bruce's ambulance is supporting the town with the first responders. It'd be wonderful if we could find a partner to support the schools and to make the vaccine available here in the Plymouth community. I know we had opportunities, slightly different vaccine, of course, when we had the N one H one ten years ago, but it would be great to have an opportunity here right within the community to do that. Right now, all I know is it should begin sometime in February.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything for Dr. Campbell? I have just a couple of quick questions. This might be kind of off topic a little bit, but I had a question today. Whereas the year has ended, is, and I couldn't remember the exact answer, free lunch? Is that being continued till the end of the school year, not the calendar year, correct?
Correct.
For COVID, okay.
Free lunch will continue through the.
That's what I thought, I just once, I just questioned myself once I was asked. And the second one, the question is just, I'm just, I just want to make sure that, you know, and I think I said this in our last meeting, that, and I think you know I've bothered you all weekend with the concerns that we've had, mostly from teachers. And I think I said this at the last meeting, that, you know, when I do bother you and you talk me through the situations, I always feel so much comfortable and I don't know if, is there anything that we can do? Have like a teacher Zoom call or something to just put their minds at ease. I mean, my heart is breaking for them, just, you know, even though it's a small amount. And I did, I did.
Your pros, Ms. Avery. I'm going to try to jump in right now and while Ms. Avery's connection gets back, we certainly, I, you know, if, I'm always concerned about our staff feeling, you know, uneasy about the situation. We are asking a lot of our staff, they're not only planning an exceptional, exceptionally significant amount of work due to the hybrid situation, but, you know, they are, they are going into school and we are asking them to come in and it's, you know, it puts many people, you know, in an anxious situation. And I think also with our staff, many of our staff really want to, you know, they're just very, they're just very conscientious about their students and supporting our kids. Are you back, Kim?
I don't know, I just got, I actually just got bumped off completely. You know, I don't know, I just, I just, you know, wish that we could do something to, to ease their minds and assure them that, you know, we are.
We certainly could do a Zoom option for people who have concerns and even at the building level and just meeting with people. I'm always, she throws again. You know, we certainly want our staff to feel safe and supported. You know, I've said that before and anything that we can do to, to do that, whether it's their mental health, we're trying to provide opportunities for that as well, but also to make people feel safe in schools. I do feel that if we keep to the, the measures that we're supposed to in terms of distancing, hand hygiene, mask wearing, with every resource that we're putting in our schools, that we really can do a really exceptional job in, and I think we have done an exceptional job. I know we've had a number of cases, but considering how large of a district we are and we did have a spike and it does, it has correlated with some of these, these unstructured times during the holidays and whatnot. But certainly, we can set up opportunities for our staff to, to, to listen to them. I've had conversations with people one-on-one, either through email or, you know, we certainly can continue that as well, but I always want people to feel. I hope that people see us all as approachable, building administration included, and we want to make them feel supportive, so we certainly can, we certainly can do that.
Thank you, I just think sooner than, than later, if we could just do something to let them know that we're, we're here for them and that we're supporting them. And, you know, I, I do answer every, every email as I can, but, you know, I don't always, you know, have the exact answers for them and I just tell them that, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna work on it as much as possible. I just, I just think, you know, just to ease their minds. So, Ms. Badger, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I, I really think that that Zoom session or however we do that is really important because, like Ms. Avery says, we've received a lot of emails of people who are just uncomfortable doing maybe a task that they maybe didn't feel uncomfortable doing before. You know, lunch duty or, you know, we've had a number of people who the fact that the massless breaks make them uncomfortable. So I, I think just maybe there are things that we aren't talking about or options we're not, we maybe have mentioned once, but could always be, you know, used to be said again so that our teachers feel as comfortable as possible when they're doing whatever they're doing. And if maybe if they're not comfortable doing something, then I'm sure there's maybe another teacher that's doing something at the same time that maybe isn't as uncomfortable with a certain duty that they would be able to switch with. So I, I think it's important to keep that conversation open, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you. I think that that, that might help and I think that just to reiterate the fact that they should feel comfortable talking to everybody that nothing, you know, bad's gonna come out of it if they just let us know how they feel. And then the last question I had too is, and we talked about this last time, but I'm still getting questions about it, is the K through two mask wearing, and I know that you had said a lot of them are and that they have to while they're on the bus, correct?
Yes, that's correct. There's no exceptions to wearing masks on buses.
And do, do we do, we do, are we like encouraging the parents saying, you know, I know it's not mandatory, but it's in your own child's best interest if they wear a mask, because they'll be safe for themselves?
I think if you walk, and I've walked in several classrooms and I know that if I had all of our elementary principals on here, they would say overwhelmingly that the students are wearing masks. You will go into a classroom from time to time and see a student whose mask, you know, may be off or they're giving the students a mask break, again, keeping in mind the physical distancing. It's certainly something that, you know, it would be a policy, perhaps, if it was something that was mandated. I do believe, and I can confirm this tomorrow again with our administrators, but I do believe that overwhelmingly, students are wearing masks. I know that I walked right before the break, I went through the preschool program. Overwhelmingly, these little kiddos, three years old, wearing masks in the classroom. So it's, I think the families have seen the benefit of that as well. They're wearing it, as I, as we said, as they're transporting to school, whether it's the bus or even their car rides in. I was out in the bus line with the preschool right before the break and they're coming in with their masks and, and overwhelmingly, you're seeing that even in the preschool program, so.
All right, anything else for Dr. Campbell before we move on? No? All right, thank you. I know this isn't, this isn't easy for anybody and this, this week, even though we, we, some of us were on break, you, I know you guys worked, so thank you very much. So the next thing is the superintendent's report, so we will just roll right into that.
This is a little bit briefer since we met right before the break, but regarding the, I do want to adjust the student learning time regulations that was, was also mentioned earlier. So as you know, by January nineteenth, we have to have a revision to our current hybrid model, very subtle in terms of revisions, I want to keep in mind, in terms of what we need to do. It's not that we need to have more days where we're bringing students in at this time. We do have to have some more synchronous time with our students. So we are working on that. We're hoping that by the end of this week, we may have some direction regarding that. I feel confident that we can do that with the goal of having something that would be rolled out on the nineteenth. Again, we're not looking at something that's drastic in terms of, you know, change for our educators, you know, to make more work and certainly trying to be mindful also of what the expectation would be, particularly for our younger students that are at home when they're not in school, understanding how that remote instruction can be challenging, particularly for the younger students and the families of our youngest children. So we will be working, continue to work on that and very hopeful that, and optimistic that we'll have something in place and we'll certainly report back about this. A reminder that we have our joint board meeting with the finance committee, the board of selectmen, Tuesday, January twelfth. This meeting, I believe, begins at six PM and will be held via Zoom, so we'll have that meeting to look forward to next Tuesday. Starting tomorrow, actually, I believe it's at West Elementary School, Dr. Rogers and I will be meeting with a variety of stakeholders from across the community. We're going to be meeting with teacher groups, families, students, trying to get additional perspective on the district and how we may improve our practices, not related to COVID necessarily. Of course, that will probably come up, but just for future planning as part of our strategic planning process. Again, we did a lot of work, as I mentioned last time, our administrative team has been working since, since we closed in March, really, but all last spring, to frame our initial analysis of all that target data that we started reviewing for the strategic planning process. The stakeholder survey that we did last year, really trying to develop our initial findings and then get additional feedback from our community. So again, getting feedback from our staff, getting feedback from our, our families and getting feedback from our students. So we're going to start scheduling that. These will be taking place via Zoom to get some additional feedback. We're starting with some meetings with school councils and PTAs as early as tomorrow and we'll be scheduling meetings with all those groups over the next several months to really get some additional feedback and I will be sure to provide periodic updates to this, to the committee regarding that as well. So that's really all I have from the savory regarding the general update for this evening.
Okay, does anybody have any questions, Ms. Badger?
I just have a quick one and actually goes back to your last update, took me a little while to process it, but can we as a district, maybe, maybe not mandate, but request that they wear them from K to two, wear the masks? Maybe a little bit more forcefully than we've been doing, just so that I, I don't know.
That's what I just said, like encourage it, like.
Yeah, like.
I guess we could reinforce that, we can, we could, and I think that's best to be done at the building level to see if we can get a message out and just encouraging our. See, the students are coming in, it's really encouraging the students in school to wear the mask, but encouraging support from our families to do that. That's certainly something we can do, we can, we can encourage that.
You don't want to put any more work on the teachers at all, but if it would make also them feel a little bit more comfortable.
And I think, I think you'll even see and, I mean, Alex and Karen may even be able to speak to this in terms of mask breaks, I think that, that varies. Sometimes we do have that, that is in the teacher's control right now in terms of mask breaks. Of course, if a student needs a mask break and it's not, they're not scheduling it, teachers are handling it in a variety of ways to, to make students feel comfortable. They really need that mask break as well. But, you know, just being mindful of everyone's comfort level with that as well as the need for that mask break, so trying to find that, that balance, certainly. But we can certainly reinforce with our younger families the importance of the mask, how the mask wearing supports our initiatives.
Anybody else, sorry, anybody else have any questions? I told you I'm paying for the fact that my dog has slept all day. Anybody else have anything for Dr. Campbell regarding? No, we're good. All right, great, thank you. So the next thing is any committee member reports? Does anybody have anything to report? I know it's been a quiet week, we really haven't been doing anything. I mean, not, not that we haven't been doing anything, but we haven't been meeting, gotta back that up. All right, well, so we, how about PYDC? Do we have any, you haven't met since the last meeting, correct?
Correct. Next meeting is January fifteenth.
All right, and then, holding committee? No.
No, we haven't, Matt, we have a meeting coming up though. We haven't met since our last.
Second Thursday.
Second Thursday of every month.
All right, anything else? All right, moving right along, we have old and new business. And I do have something for old business, does anybody else though? I'll let you go first. No? Okay, so I just wanted to make a quick announcement about the vacant school committee seat that we announced at the last meeting. And since then, we did find out that we got some, some inaccurate information and we are in the process of correcting that and I think I could email out to everybody here and as did, to explain it. So what we had found out, and this isn't originally what we were told, is that the vacant seats, we can appoint, but only until May and time for the election. And at that point, what's going to happen is there'll be a special opening for a one-year term on the ballot. So our appointment will only go till May and then whoever wants to run for that seat can run for just a year. And then at that point, it would turn into a regular three-year term. If that makes any sense, so it'll go till twenty twenty-two and then that person or whoever in the community wants to run for that seat can run for that, that three-year term. So we, we have had some legislative interest. Ms. Grimes was kind enough to reach out to them and explain to them that that process and what's going to happen. I know I talked to two of them and they were fine, they still are interested. And so just to give you a quick idea of what our timeline's going to look like, January thirteenth will be the last day to submit an interest, a letter of interest and or resume. On our next meeting, which I believe on my calendar open is the twenty-fifth. Yeah. We are going to invite the candidate, any candidates at that time to just come to our meeting. And I sent my email to the, to the committee today or yesterday. I asked that maybe we can submit some questions to us, Peggy and I, ahead of time, we can consolidate them into three questions. We can ask all the candidates the same three questions. And that way we can kind of get a feel for what's going on with, you know, and then. And that way, we can kind of get a feel for what's going on with, you know, and, and then on February second, and we did it, we did reach out to the selectmen as well. We asked Chairman Tavarez to let his board know that they could tune in if they want to hear the answers to those questions. But it's just going to give us another touch point with them before we go into a meeting and all of a sudden just have to vote, because it'll be a busy meeting. So February second, we'll have the joint meeting with the school committee and the Board of Selectmen. And by majority vote, we'll appoint someone to fill that term until the election on May fifteenth. May fifteenth will be the special town election for one year, or it's not a special, it's the regular town election with a special vacancy seat on it for one year. The other thing that I didn't mention last time is to let all the candidates know that whoever we do appoint will be required to take the chartering course, which is a workshop designed by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And it just kind of is more of like an onboarding. There's a lot of rules, regulations, ethical things that is really important. And it really is valuable to us as school committee members to have that training before we are actually put to the fire and have to, you know, participating in our meetings and vote. So that will be also required, and the good news is that can be virtual now. So it's nothing that's going to take up too much time. So that's my update on that. Unless I missed anything, Ms. Crimes, Mr. or Dr. Campbell, I think I covered everything. So for the school committee meetings, thank you, Mr. Morgan already sent some questions. If you guys want to send in some questions, we'll try to consolidate them. At one point, we thought about asking, and I know Ms. Badger asked if everyone could ask a question, but if for some reason we get a large number of applicants and we're all asking questions, it'll be for a very long meeting. So we figured just maybe streamline it, consolidate them into three meetings, into three questions. And that's, that's it for old business. Anybody have anything for new business? Nope, all right, all right. Next up, approval of consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Or does anything need to be removed, first of all, from the consent agenda? Ms. Burgess? Did you have something to add, Ms. Burgess?
No, I was going to move it.
Oh, okay, all right. I asked if anything was going to be removed, and you, you raised your hand.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so you're going to move the approval of the consent agenda. Is there a second? Badger seconds? Any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, so let's go ahead and take a vote. Ms. Badger, do you approve the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Hay, Hay, Heywood, Heywood, did I do it right?
Heywood.
Heywood, I did it wrong. I found out for years. I'm sorry, yes?
Yes.
Mrs. Burgess?
Yes.
And Mr. Morgan?
Yeah.
I vote yes, so the consent agenda is approved. So with that, that ends our public meeting right now. Do I have a motion to go into executive session? Mrs. Badger?
I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining, collective bargaining litigation.
Okay, start a second. Heywood, Heywood, second, and sorry, Mr. Morgan should be.
That's quite all right.
Discussion on going into executive session? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Badger?
Yes.
And Ms. Hay, Heywood? Mrs. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yeah.
Okay, I vote yes, so we are, do we need some time to transition into our executive session?